I just received some updated information from the county superintendent that was somehow lost with technology. So, anyone wishing to make a comment, please sign up. And when you step to the microphone to the side of the room, please state your name and your address for the record.
Do that now or?
I have a question. Can we speak after the presentation or?
No, it's a public hearing. So you'll say what you wish to convey.
But we will know if you're, you don't have a hard copy, so we're going to see it on the screen, so how do we know?
I signed it.
I didn't know if she.
The hard copy has been posted.
Did she say we will wait now or? After this.
After.
So happy to hear your thoughts. We did solicit for questions and answers.
And now. Okay, good. Is it on?
Is there a little switch on? No, on the mic itself?
On the mic itself, on the top.
Should be a little on off switch.
Good evening. Is it on?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. My name is Linda Mokari and I live at 309 Joyce Lane for 21 years since 2002. And I am the owner and the resident of my home on Joyce Lane. And I'm here tonight for something that happened. I had an interaction with Mr. Humphries on Sunday.
Ma'am, this is a budget hearing.
Okay.
The, the, the hearing has to pertain to the budget. If it's not.
So when do I take my concerns about what happened on Sunday?
Yeah, you can come to the town hall at other time and voice your concern.
I'd like to do it at a meeting where it's a public.
Okay. The next, the next meeting is November 14th.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any public comment about the budget, proposed budget?
Tim Kelly, Griffin Drive, 119 Griffin Drive. I'm a third generation resident here in Hurley. And I mean, that interaction was pretty typical of what we see down here at town hall, just like this budget is. This is what I would call a pretty politically motivated budget. And it's very convenient that it's being released, you know, a couple of weeks before and it's showing all these cuts because, or supposed cuts in property taxes, which are really funded by $200,000 in additional state aid, which how can we know what we're getting next year for state aid? And then in addition to that, cuts to the highway department, which I guess now we're blaming on an oversight, which is what we tend to do at these meetings. And then basically, we're just going to obfuscate the public, which, so we're not going to print any hard copies of the actual budget because it's going to change after the election. This is just a convenient hearing to push forward the McKnight administration's political agenda. I really want to know why you haven't censured Mr. Humphries like it was recommended in the legal report several months ago.
Thank you.
Diana, Diana Klein, 420 Fairview Avenue.
It's on.
Okay, so I'm here, I've been a volunteer at the planning board for 15 years. Prior to that, the zoning board. Been through Mike Schulz's administration, Gary Bellows, John Perry. No issues, always had a planner at our meetings. We're all volunteers. We don't plan.
Is this about the budget?
Oh, it is, because I want to know where the money is that you haven't paid the planner since April 2022.
That's not true.
So she's not going to be at the meeting this Thursday night. So that puts me in jeopardy as a, as a volunteer at this planning board. We're not going to be able to conduct any business. But if you haven't paid her since April 2022, where are those funds? And if it's an escrow issue, where is that money? Are we not getting the money for escrow? So we're due money that we're not getting? There's stale checks she mentioned, so that's money that we can't, that we had, we didn't cash, and now we can't cash? So I'm just wondering, how is that falling into this budget? What else are we not paying for? What else do we not see? I cannot believe, and then apparently, we're not even paying the attorney for the planning board either, but they're still coming. That is just outrageous.
That's not a town board issue. The town board bills are getting paid.
Um, that would be a town board issue because the planning board does not issue checks. But my question is, it's, there must be a budget somewhere. So I'm just very, very curious where this all falls into your budget, because that's 18 months worth of stuff that's not showing anywhere, or is it showing someplace? So any insight you can give me on that, that would be great.
Those funds come out of escrow and there is plenty of money in the budget to pay the consultants that need to be paid.
But why aren't they paid then? And the money is not in the escrow because she mentioned that there's checks that are stale, means they're more than six months old, that we're not going to be able to cash.
That's an issue with the planning board clerk. Full stop. Okay? That's the answer.
Well, but that would be part of our budget. That would be funds that go into the general fund, so that's why it's budget related. I'm just, I just wanted to know how crazily infuriating that is as a planning board member, because I'm a volunteer, I mean, I'm not an expert in planning and I need that consultant to be at these meetings. And that's just outrageous for my town.
You need to take it up with your clerk and your planning board chair.
Um, no, I believe that the town board is the one that writes the checks.
The town board's bills are paid.
But it's part of your budget. That's where this.
There's a line item for consultants, yes.
But I'm letting you know that you're 18 months off. So how, but how grand a budget could this be if you're 18 months off?
It comes out. It's escrow. That's what it is.
It's bills to be paid.
I'd like to, because I didn't know what Diana was going to say, but I'm going to follow up with that because it is a budget issue. Having been in your position, Melinda, you are the fiscal officer. You are responsible for managing the town's finances. So if one of your departments is not functioning properly, and it's impossible that you can't know that the consultants are walking through the door and that there should be bills and there should be checks in your reporting and in your accounting every month. And if you don't see those payments, then there's something that's meant, that's, you know, missing in management. On the other hand, having looked at the budget, I am very concerned that you have potentially over-exaggerated incoming resources, whether it be sales tax, mortgage tax.
Can you be specific, please?
Well, if I could have a copy of the current budget that was available, I would be specific. But I find it also unbelievable that.
It's been posted for weeks.
But there are changes and there, there are lots of errors that were in that budget from my understanding. So I was anticipating an updated copy and that there would be handouts for the public. So I believe that you have over-exaggerated your income on mortgage tax and sales tax, having been, well, so, right? Public comment, I believe you've over-exaggerated. I would like to see what, because I couldn't find it in what I saw online, and maybe I missed it. But I couldn't find any of the changes in your reserve fund balances and your unexpended appropriation lines. Oh, interest? Well, but, and that you were budgeting $25,000 in interest. Okay. Well, I still think that that's substantially low. But I think that if you over-exaggerate, being in the real estate world right now, if you're over-exaggerating your income from mortgage tax with the increase in mortgages, that you will be at a substantial shortfall next year. Instead of increasing one, they should be being decreased is my, and not increased over or decreased over what you were anticipating last year, but what you substantially received. I'm also concerned, it appeared that there were lines missing. I don't know how you can project an 11% decrease unless you have excessive funds that you are using out of your reserves. Because you have a very small town, you have a small amount of budgets. You're, you're dealing with a transfer station, a highway department, the town board, and your, your offices within this building. And I don't see how you can project an 11% decrease without over-exaggerating your income. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tracy Alcio, I don't know if it's all this truth, but it's going to be said here tonight.
Yeah, Diana Klein again. One of the items that I had seen, and again, it was hard to follow the whole thing, on your interest and earnings, 2023 budget was only 25,000. 2024, it's $140,000. I think that's kind of what she's talking about. And then in previous budgets, we had unexpended balances of $300,000 in the general fund and the, in the highway. You don't have that at all in this 2024 fund. So those would be things that need to be addressed.
So anyone else wishing to make a comment?
Come on, we can go over department heads to go. Anyone else?
You're welcome to.
I'd like to go through it one by one, just so I can explain to the board exactly what each line is used for.
Okay.
This is, this is his book.
Yeah.
Before you start, it says at the top, it says 2019. Is that an error? On this document that I just received from your department, I guess appropriations, but is that what you're going to be talking about?
No, that's.
It just says that. I asked.
That's historical data. That's not, that's historical data off the controller's website, just to show the actual expenditures for the last seven, eight years. Because some of the, some of the figures that were on the worksheets that I got back had, the actuals were not correct. Like last year, on the budget paper that Melinda just handed me, it says that on 2022, on repairs contractual, I spent only 31,356. But if you look at what we reported to the controller, the figure was 128,286. That's a big difference. So the numbers are skewed in the worksheets. And, and what that did in essence is that on, on the DA 5110.4 line contractual, there was an average of the last three years put in for the budget. And that repair line is for everything that's covered under the 284 for, for repairs, from culvert pipes, like the culvert pipe that we did on, on Holland Drive a couple of weeks ago, like the ones we're going to do tomorrow on Flanders. These are all things that we can't anticipate what we're going to be repairing because we don't know. We're going to be patching potholes through the winter, patching in the spring and the summer, culvert pipes, somebody's driveway collapses, we go out, we replace that. So that money that we put in that line for repairs is what we use from May 1st until November 1st. And they, that goes to everything that we do on repairs. And again, I can't give you a list of what we're going to be repairing, because they're changes. They're change, I could say I'm going to do something tomorrow and I could go in tomorrow morning and we could totally change because something happened and we're going to, we're going to fix that. So that line there, I had, I had proposed bumping to 150,000 from 135. And if you remember, that was the line that you guys wanted to increase to 435,000 back when we were doing the 284 agreement. So I'd like you to take a look, a long look at that line and, because at a budget of $56,000, we're not going to get a lot of work done, especially with the, the increase in culvert pipe and the catch basins and, I mean, I'm going to try and buy whatever I can this fall underneath the current bid list for the county and that, so that we have some, some materials that we can supplement that with, but $56,000 won't go far in repairs. Line one on that DA 5110.1, that's salaries, that's the negotiated contract with the union. Then you drop down to DA 5112.2, which is permanent improvements, and that's for paving. And blacktop's gone up about $14 a ton. We try to do as much as we can every year. We get, we're promised about $265,000 in the four programs. Chips is the, the majority of it. Then you have pops, which we have to use or lose, which is a pothole one. Then we got emergency snow, and then we have paved New York. So that 265 usually comes back in to the general fund and then that goes back in as a appropriated fund balance to feed that line again for next year to try to lower the tax burden. You drop down to DA 5130, personal services, that's the mechanics line. We have mechanic salary in there and we also add a little bit to that because there's times when we put a helper in there. And if we have to put somebody in to help him when he's doing heavy work, we have to pay that person out of class per union contract. And so that, the difference between mechanic salary and the HMEO salary gets added on. So I broke it down in that, that summary sheet that I gave you. With each of the men, they had several thousand dollars when they went in to help. Machinery equipment, mostly for tools. The DA 5130.4 contractual, that's all the parts that we buy, all the repairs we make on the equipment, the trucks. $75,000, we've, we've already spent 104,000, or, I'll take that back, we already spent 78,000 on that sheet that you gave me. 78,235, and that was the end of September. We've probably added 10,000 to that or more and we have a truck in the shop getting a new head, which is going to be rather expensive. So the repairs on the trucks are, are critical and that line is critical for the highway and for us to serve the public. Now you drop down to DA 5140 miscellaneous, we say it's miscellaneous, but in the, the controller's office, it's really brush, trees and brush. And if you look at the, the historical data, you'll see that we had a couple instances where it was rather high, one being when we had the tornado, when the ice storm. We did, I think the men did six weeks on brush when we had the ice storm and the tornado. So that line there was cut in half and that's all part of the salaries. So if we don't have the salaries, I don't know if you want to lay off somebody or if you want to cut a position, but you know, all your point ones positions on DA 5110, DA 5130, DA 1, 5140 and DA 5142 are all the salaries that were negotiated by your office with the union.
I use those salaries.
All right, well, you did cut the one, you cut the miscellaneous one.
That's been fixed. Thank you.
All right, then contractual and miscellaneous, that, that can go for a multitude of things, the cameras and the GPS in the trucks, things of that nature. You drop down to snow, again, personal services, the contractual, you put the number in there I had. Snow equipment, there was zero and that, and, because that usually comes out of 3H, capital fund. And then contractual. And a contractual for snow covers everything from the wash screens we get to mix with the salt, the salt, any of the coal pads that we use if we have potholes in the wintertime and that. And, I'm trying to look at the sheet, that one was cut also. So I'm just, I'm concerned with the proposed budget that I had given you was an eight tenths of a percent increase, but that did not include the employee benefits. So when I got the numbers last week from you for the employee benefits, which are in red on this sheet, the budget increased, I think it was 1.82%. So I'm just asking you to take a long look at that, because really, the highway department is the only thing that the residents see for their dollar. They see us out there working and fixing roads and taking care of business. So I'd like you to, the board, to look at those lines. And if you have any questions, reach out, give me a shout.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any other questions?
Oh, one, one last thing I want to mention. On the A fund line for superintendent, I'm not sure there's enough in the salary line, personal services line to cover the, the salaries and the buyout. I don't know if the insurance buyout comes out of the salaries line or not.
It doesn't.
Okay. So any final? The other one I had a question on was, I noticed that this year to date, there's been about $9,000 spent in that account. And I never signed a single voucher for that. And I'm just concerned that monies are being spent underneath the superintendent line that I've never signed a voucher for, that I don't, and I don't even know where that money came from, because there wasn't enough money in that account to pay that.
So it's been covered, but I hear you.
Yeah, I have a question to ask. Am I allowed to now? Listen. Yeah, I'm, I'm curious to know with the, the medical benefits here, it says $200,000, which is like last year's benefits, but every, but if you look at every year from that point up, it's always been an increase.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, I understand that healthcare is increasing for the next year. Have we thought, have we budgeted for the increase?
Yes.
It's part of the 200,000?
Mm-hmm.
But if we?
Yeah, it came in, it came in shine that last year, so.
Okay.
Okay, I, I'd like to address some, the revenue part of this. I know that's, let's see if I can walk into them at the same time here. All right, so this is going to be hard to see. We'll post this tomorrow morning. So I heard concerns about potentially over-projecting revenue. The fact is that the sales tax revenue number that's in the budget was supplied by Ulster County. I took the number that was projected at the 3%, leaving out the 1% extra that the town will receive, so that there will likely be a excess revenue in that line. So initially, we had budgeted level with this year, which projected at 300,000. We were at 239,000 as of the end of September. We are expecting another sales tax payment. County controller felt pretty strongly that we will hit the revenue projection for sales tax.
Which is 230?
Which is 230. She's even confident we'll hit the 300 this year. Mortgage transfer tax. In this year's budget, the projection was $110,000. We've received $116,000 so far. It is typical that we will get another mortgage transfer tax payment. I kept it flat at 110 for next year. I felt pretty confident about that. Interest income. I understand that interest income is substantially higher than it has been in the past. With that said, I contacted the vice president of commercial banking at the Bank of Green County and he assured me that the interest rate that we are receiving right now at 2.25% on $6.3 million in our savings account will give us $140,000 in revenue. Interest revenue. So far this year, we have $65,000 in interest, so.
What are they, what are they giving on the three-month and six-month CDs?
Well, that's to be investigated yet, so.
That's where I made all my money from the supervisor.
Yeah, so that's the next, that's the next step. The town doesn't have that right now, but.
Yeah, certainly in the savings. I always put it in my play with that going back to the CDs and I make, I make like almost $1,000.
So I have a meeting with the, with the bankers next week. So, I mean, his, his thinking, again, this is Don McCormick, Bank of Green County, suggested that that 2.25% will likely hold next year and potentially increase. So I think for 2024, $140,000 on a balance of 6.3 million is reasonable. So.
Does that 6.3 million include, that's all the, the H fund, the capital H funds?
Mm-hmm.
So some of those will, will be depleted, right?
No, I wouldn't think those will be depleted.
We got, we got a $1 million dollar stock still there.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, I'm hoping they'll get.
No telling, right? So I'm really looking to the town board to weigh in. Are there any lines you feel you want adjusted? Actually, I should back up and introduce you all to Tim Doyle, our, our accountant, PONDO group, and has been helpful.
Yeah, can I, can I offer a little bit of?
Please.
Yes. I mean, I've heard a lot this evening from the public comments, from, from the supervisor. And I think it's important to note that all of this is constructive. All of this is part of building a budget. The budget that you've seen and it's posted on your website right now is an initial budget. It's the, the first blush of that budget. It's the same as any town, village we do initially, put out a budget for public comment, for people, for the stakeholders, the taxpayers to offer their thoughts. You know, a, a few things were mentioned today about some of the revenues, and I know we, we spoke in the weeks leading up about some of those same questions that we had as we reviewed and said, hey, the interest income looks very high, right? Okay, there was support for that, there's a reason for that. And we know, working with a lot of other governments as well, obviously, the environment is such that interest rates are higher, so you would expect it to be up as well. We talked about the fact that the county had projected their sales tax and that number, that's where that came from. Part of the process in building a budget is that initial budget for comment from all the stakeholders, tweaks to the budget after they've heard responses and incorporated your thoughts into it as well. And, and when you're building that budget, you're, you're looking at historical actuals and budgets and comparing those and seeing what you think may happen. Any known changes, are there any changes in services or, or things that, maybe additional positions? So if you have known changes, you're incorporating those. Input from your department heads, we, we heard today of, of some updates on some of the numbers from the department heads, that's constructive, that's good. It's important to have those numbers from your departments. And, and then ultimately contractual is a big thing. In all governments, payroll and benefits are the biggest piece of your appropriations. As mentioned by one of your department heads, that's contractually agreed to, there isn't a whole lot of play in there. I did hear something about one of the numbers being a little large on the, on the highway side due to some weather events. I don't know if, in fact, you received any FEMA monies for any of that, but likely, a lot of that was overtime. So, so the fact that it may go down from year to year, isn't that a position would be cut, but that maybe there'd be less overtime because there's less events that your, your hand laid.
Just, just so you know, unless the county reaches 22 million, no FEMA money.
So, and then lastly, debt agreements. You have debt agreements in place that have certain maturity requirements for both principal and interest, you know, that's, that's in there as well. You know, the, the contractual, the debt agreements, those are pretty firm. You know what those will be. Some of the other things, you have to make your best estimate based upon the past, you know, and events, things like that. So in reviewing with, with the supervisor, you know, we, we looked over these and felt like these were good conservative numbers based upon the facts you have. But again, as you receive more input, facts, that, the process is that it will change and that it will incorporate, you know, your thoughts where it makes the most sense for the town.
Thank you. All right, we'll have to be clear to see. So the preliminary revenue projections are $1,846,161. 2022, 2022 actual revenue is $2,250,000. And where we are year to date, 2023, is $1,739,796. That's as of September 30th of this year.
And includes highway revenues and town phone revenues?
Uh, no, that does not include highway revenues.
That's all part of the budget?
That's just, no, I know, I separated it out though. I separated it out, I did highway separate. So this is what the salary breakdown looks like for just the general funds, this is not highway. Safety inspection is 22% of the budget. Transfer station is $123,000. Supervisor's office is $103,946, that's three salaries. My salary remains flat at $28,000. My salary remains flat at twenty-eight thousand dollars. My assistant and the bookkeeper are, will actually make more. And then there's the highway supervisor. So that's the breakdown of the supervisor's office. I don't want anybody to think that I'm making a hundred and three thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-four employee benefits. Again, this is just the departments that the general fund covers. Medical insurance, state retirement, town shares, social security, workers' comp. Disability and unemployment are relatively small pieces of the puzzle. And so the projected appropriations. Big ticket items, but also the big revenue producer is the transfer station. Highway garage obviously is a large piece of the pie there because they're, they pay for two facilities. Buildings, the, the buildings, hot piece of the pie, covers everything. Electric, oil, coffee caper, cleaning products, toilet paper and paper towels. You know, it's a, it's kind of a catch-all along with any, you know, any repairs that need to be done that are minor and things like that.
Would I cover, would I cover the maintenance person if we ever get them back again so they can clean the bathroom and the office?
Yes. If we can get some applicants. We have a, we have a job posting for a cleaner, so if you know anybody, get them to apply. Unallocated insurance, we are expecting an insurance increase this year because of cybersecurity. So that, that's going up a bit. Everything else is pretty, pretty status quo.
Yeah, one question to ask you, but could you like attorney fees, ten point nine percent? What about legal fees?
That's all, it's included in that.
It's part of the ten point nine percent? That includes like, for example, all the money we spent on like the appeals for like Dunkin' and so forth, like a hundred thousand dollars? It's all part of the ten point nine?
Yeah, yeah, that was all, that was all paid for in, in the regular budget. The thing that wasn't included were the federal suits that were brought in against the town that was all paid for by the insurance company. But you're projecting the same thing for twenty-four? So that's all attorney's fees, that's our labor attorney, that's the, um, the town attorney.
Planning board?
That's also our, it's not the, it's, it's some of the planning board, but that's also split with the, the planning board line, contractual line. It's also our special prosecutor who comes and does, um, the A T. The town, she's a town employee, so she gets, she gets paid out of the town budget.
So you have on the budget here something like eighty thousand dollars for attorney fees?
Eighty-five, yeah.
Eighty-five thousand? Now, part of the attorney fees, that also the legal fees included in that, is that something separate?
Yes, no, that's, that's, that amount is included. We have retainers with, with attorneys, right, our labor attorney is.
Right, but the others aren't paid by, by the hour?
Yes. Well, even the labor attorneys are paid by the hour if it's not within the retainer agreement, right? Like, it's, I mean, you, you get what you get with the tier.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying here is like, how much money did we spend on appeals for the, like, like the Dunkin' Donuts, for example? We had two appeals, that, that, that was like a hundred thousand?
No, twenty-five, maybe?
Twenty-five thousand for both?
Maybe, yeah, it wasn't, I mean, you'd think it'd be more, but it really wasn't.
Twenty-five or fifty each.
Twenty-five thousand?
Or fifty each is what we were told.
We were told it was fifty, yeah, we were told it was fifty thousand for each appeal.
I can only go by the receipts that I have and how it was, I mean, that's off the top of my head right now, I could go back and give you a better number.
They're familiar.
No.
Those are part of the receipts that are not getting paid.
No, that's not true. No, that's not true. That's, that's not true. All, all of those fees have been paid, the Town Board is.
Well, I had a, I had a question, Board, on the, on the buildings, on two, two lines. I know that when the union rep and the union came down to sign the contract, they discussed some of the absolute needs and from what they told me, there was an agreement that you were gonna heat the old garage to about fifty degrees. Is that true?
Well, it's what we're being told we have to do, so.
Yeah, for the bathroom and for in order to have water at the trailer and everything else.
Bathroom, like, really, people shouldn't be in the building. You know?
So I'm concerned that we've dropped the budget, contractual budget down to a hundred and thirty thousand when we're already at a hundred and seventy thousand. Four hundred and seven dollars for this year, we had a two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar budget, that was one. And then, um, there's no personal services line for buildings, so I'm guessing the maintenance guy would come out of that, there's only six thousand.
Yeah, there's a little bit.
So I don't know if we go back to having a service come in every two weeks or.
We can look at that, I was hoping when we get out, we can split the position, so.
Yeah, well, it may be, it may be cheaper to go with the janitorial ser, janitorial service.
Honestly, contracting out with third-party vendors is never less expensive. You would think that it would be, but it's not.
Well, I don't know how much we're paying for.
It was not inconsequential and the job that was being done was not very good.
Well, our maintenance guy wasn't doing a heck of a lot better.
No, I, I hear you, so.
Then the other, the other one was the, um, the garage. Well, I'm, I'm going past here, eight thirty-three-ten, traffic control. There's nothing in there for equipment and we're gonna, if we're buying those speed humps or if we do the speed humps, those are not a repair, those are traffic control, so they have to come out of that budget line, so we would have to fund that line. And then the, uh, the equipment and the contractual, I think, I don't know, you paid, you paid the contract, contractual for the speed sign, correct, the digital speed sign?
No.
I don't remember what that was, was it like?
It's a three-year term, I think, fifteen hundred.
Okay, so you got two thousand in that line. And then I go down to garage, which that's where our lease and that comes out of, and the lease goes up this year again.
Yeah, just a little bit.
So between that, we've already gotten two oil deliveries. And this week, we won't be burning any oil because temperature's going up, thank God. But I think there was a contraction in the, in the union contract, you agreed to pay a thousand dollars for tools for a mechanic, does that come out of that line for equipment on a garage line?
Um, that's a good question, I think so.
Okay, we'll look at that. And then, um, I think that's pretty much all I had.
Yeah, I have.
I thought it'd be paper copies here, so I didn't bring my copy, so I apologize for having to look on my phone. I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Can I use my?
That's.
I'll get it from you later, I got it on my phone for now, keep your copy.
I just, I have a question about that mine also, that's the, uh, the A sixteen-twenty buildings. Now, the building is contractual, the C E's? Uh, we spent so far two hundred and forty-eight thousand, but next year it only budgeted one thirty-five thousand?
So we rolled some ARCA money into that line, you remember when we bought two vehicles that came, that's the line it came out of? And it was funded with ARCA money, so. We did that by resolution.
What's the, what's the conservation line, the fifty-seven thousand, is that gonna be for like the compactor for the food waste and stuff?
No, that's, that's servicing the closed landfill.
What is it?
Servicing the closed landfill. It may not be anywhere near that, but that's, that's a guesstimate for right now. That's really all budget's are right now.
We are gonna sign a contract, right, with Green, whatever?
For, for compost, yes, yeah.
So is that kind of, roughly the garbage contractual or?
So working with them will reduce our outlay and the Town Board approved the contract with them to come out of the landfill reserve fund. So.
Kind of flat?
The landfill reserve fund to each.
Are you allowed to do that operations of a, kind of a?
It's just, it's a one-time contract, we'll, we'll make sure that it's, figure it out. One moment.
And returning.
And returning, yes.
Toby Carey in Glenford. I, I wonder where in the budget things like gasoline and diesel and such for the highway vehicles is located and how we know how much that is. I had asked for that information, but there was very little available, so I'm curious if that's a separate line or.
It's in a highway.
That comes out in, uh, May, May to November, May first up to October thirty-first, comes out of the repair line. And from November first until April thirtieth, it comes out of the snow contractual line. And if you put in a request for global, that's who sells us all our diesel off the O G S bid. I see it, I see it in front of me, that's global something or other, that lists all our diesel. And then the WEX card is where we get all our gas, it's a card that every truck has, it's assigned to each truck. Each driver has a number that he punches in, so if they go to Stewart's, they put that card in, they put the mileage of that truck. They put their four-digit code in so we know who's getting the gas. And then WEX processes it and sends us the bill once a month for the gas. The county uses that and we get reduced price on that for, you know, for the road, the state road tax.
Thank you.
So we were gonna do that for diesel, but it's cheaper to buy the diesel from global as a comparison of that, so it's cheaper to get it off the O G S bid.
Thanks.
Again, that, that good case in point that he makes there because not only are we repairing culvers and up in roads with that repair line, that's also paying for all our fuel, our diesel fuel and our gas for those six months and then the winter line. I'd have to look at the metrics again, I can't recall off the top of my head, but. More cave and then more plow, a lot of people.
Can I just clarify a question? So when there's, when there are these sudden shifts, sudden shifts, changes in the budget, where, you know, unforeseen things, we have to, you know, every superintendent has to do this, that, or the other, where do those monies typically come from? We have to, well, let's say for argument's sake, there, no, not a tornado, but something, a, a road, there's a ditch, a road caves in. Where does that money come from that now addresses this emergency situation?
That's a question. If there's an emergency, a road emergency, uh.
So, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the question.
Give me your microphone.
Yeah, the question, Mike, is, you know, you looked at the budget and you said, well, this is low, this needs to be increased because, and then you went on to explain that things can happen during the year where there's an increase or there's a, there's a sudden increase in the budget. But you can't project for that. You use your, I, I assume you use the best estimates that you have, but if something unforeseen happens, what do you do then? How, how is the budget addressed then? How do we pay?
Well, we, we do our best we can, like when Phil Pay's Road collapsed, I think it was Irene. Phil Pay's Road collapsed and it washed out and we were able to, that happened when I was in office as supervisor and that, that issue right there, we were able to actually get some FEMA money because the county reached the threshold and FEMA paid for that rehabilitation of that road because it was rather expensive.
So not, I'm not, I'm not talking about.
But if it doesn't cover FEMA, then it comes out of my repair budget.
So if, if the budget, if you're in excess, if the.
I mean, payroll's there already, the payroll's.
I'm not talking about payroll.
But if we need, if we need a lot of, you know, big gabions or rocks to stabilize a bank or something else to that nature, it's gonna come out of the repair line, if I don't have enough money, then I gotta come to you all. Because that budget is set for the repair line.
So I understand.
Hundred and fifty thousand that I suggested.
So let me ask Melinda the quest, the follow-up question. So when that happens, where typically do we receive? For him, for the highway superintendent to make those changes? Say, for example, a hundred thousand dollars is needed. It's not in his budget, it's going to be in our budget, budget somewhere, where would it come from?
It would come out of reserve.
Yeah.
How much is that reserve?
We have two point one million in unassigned fund balance and we have six point three million in earmarked capital improvement funds.
So you're saying that if there's a, a massive swing in his budget, there's likely going to be available funds to cover this shortfall?
Yeah, we can always appropriate funds.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get.
I'm worried about that, right?
That's correct, and you'd have to, what, what was the reason for that swing? Was it something that was unexpected and significant that you could not have expected or is it just a shortfall?
Short, yeah.
And that, and that note, I would, I would suggest putting X number of dollars instead of, instead of anticipating CHIPS money for revenue. Because under COVID, they took twenty percent of that away overnight.
I understand.
So maybe it'd be better if we appropriated two or three hundred thousand dollars of that reserve fund for the budget instead of putting that revenue way up. And then if that revenue comes back, then we put it back in and keep that appropriated balance going.
That's why we're having, that's why we're having this conversation. You know, I, I didn't include any fund balance in the budget because I wanted to have a discussion with the Town Board.
I think we used to put it in there because the town funds three hundred thousand dollars for permanent improvements.
Right.
And so in essence, they always try to take and appropriate that balance at the end of the year. And then any other money left over, they would put into, you know, three H for equipment or anything in the highway.
Mm-hmm.
And I did notice that some of the lines, that another thing I want to mention that I was gonna talk to you about was the, um, like this year, we sold a truck and an excavator, it was about twenty, twenty-some thousand dollars. And, you know, do those monies go back into the three H or does it go? Because normally, the, I spend the funds, I'm going into townwide storm. Like in, you know, the three years that we did those big projects, there wasn't a lot of repair work because I had half the crew doing that.
Right.
But then at the end of the year, I had all those monies left over that would go back in and replenish that townwide stormwater fund. So that's why we, we tried to perpetuate that, so we were always able to go and, and get those things done, whether we did them in-house or we contracted it out.
Mm-hmm.
So, just made good budget sense.
Absolutely.
I have one more question to ask, as the issue of those funds, those, um, undesignedated funds. And there was a conversation about interest-bearing instruments that we can apply.
Mm-hmm.
So typically, those interest-bearing instruments would be running on one month, three month, six month.
Three or six.
Yeah, three or six or one year cycle. So if there is a problem on his end, we can always make an adjustment there. I mean, we might have to lose money depending, but there could be an adjustment. All I'm trying to do, all I'm trying to say here is that if there is a problem and we can't cover the budgeted allocation, there's a mechanism to allow us to appropriate funds from somewhere else. So, you know, I'm, we have a significant fund balance that we can tap into if it is needed. So all we're trying to do here, in my estimation, is try to get the best budget in line that we can get. And that's where your comments come in, that's where you, the, the public has to make, you know, have, make some input. So that's my, that's my, that's my comments.
I know that the engineer, man, he suggested that we're gonna have to bond for these drainage projects that we've got going on. So, you know, the, the townwide stormwater could eat up that, that fund balance rather quickly. I, I don't know, did you get any bids in yet at all for Kimball Terrace?
No.
I'm a little nervous on what these bids are gonna come back in, uh, given what I've seen at some of the other towns. And I think we have, what do we have left in the stormwater?
Around eight hundred.
Yeah, so that could be, that's not enough to do even Wildwood and, and Kimball Terrace. So, um, you know, if you start doing a lot of these drainage projects, Brittany and Arnold and all the other ones we're talking about?
We can't do everything all at once.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so we don't wanna bond, you know, if we bond, then, then we're going into debt and we're paying interest on it.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Melinda, what is the fund balance, projected fund balance for this year? In other words, like what we appropriated last year and how much is left over of that money?
Um, it's, it's on your budget forms. I have the nine thirty twenty twenty-three actual. So currently, currently, we've spent one million five hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. And our total income, um, our total twenty twenty-two income, I mean, twenty twenty-three year-to-date. Where's that slide? There we go. Our total revenue thus far this year, as of the end of September, was one million seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. So.
That's for three quarters out of four.
Yes.
All right. And what did we spend so far?
One million five hundred and seventy-one thousand, no, five hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars.
That's just out of the general fund.
Right.
Yes.
So we have probably two hundred thousand over budget, essentially, at this point?
We have two hundred thousand roughly more revenue than we have spent.
In, in three quarters of a full year.
Right, right. So it possibly is having like three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand if it goes this way.
It's conceivable.
Yeah. And we're gonna take all that money and put it, not, and not, uh, put it back in for next year at all?
That's, that's the town board's decision. I didn't want to presume to do that without talking with you all. And this is the conversation we would have had if I had not been sick that first meeting.
Right, so can we talk about it now?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
All right, I would like to see some of that fund balance go back to the, to lower the tax rate. You know, like last year.
It, it won't affect the tax rate. The taxes are staying flat. So we can roll that money back in, but the taxes are what they were this year.
All right, but I'm, I'm just saying, for example, like twenty twenty-three, we put six hundred thousand dollars back into, into the next year's budget, more or less, from twenty twenty-two.
It went into the fund balance and then some of it was used to defer, yes.
Are we also taking that fund balance and like fill, and, uh, at least refilling the capital nineteen H fund for drainage? Where we had.
Yeah, we do that by resolution every December.
Okay, all right. And, and we are planning on doing that in December?
We do it every December.
We did it last time.
We did it last year.
So if we bring, if we bring some of the fund balance from this year into twenty twenty-four, therefore, the spending itself, appropriations.
That'll increase the budget amount. It'll increase the budget amount and give us more money to work with.
I, I didn't see the resolution.
In December?
Yeah, I never, I looked for it and I couldn't find it.
Well, we did it, it was.
The accounts murder money, murder highway money. All the CHIPS money, was that transferred to three H and stormwater or appropriated for this year?
It was written with the former accounting firm. So I didn't, you know, I didn't write that, the other accounting firm did.
And Mike, during that period, Mike, during that period.
With help, right?
During that period of time, you know what we were dealing with, with the point of times.
Yeah, things were kind of bumpy around here, so.
We're still, we're still trying to figure that stuff out.
Because that was one of the things we spoke about a couple of years ago.
Yes.
How administrations took all the CHIPS money and we never saw any of that going into three H and that's why our fleet went, depleted.
Yep.
And I wanna make sure that those monies are staying with highway.
We will make, we will make sure of that, yes.
And, you know, so that we don't have to go to taxpayers' pocket all the time to get new trucks and, because they're getting more expensive by the day.
Yeah.
So I, I think it would be good if that resolution was, could be pulled up. So from December, so that.
Yeah, I'm looking for it now.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know where it, I know, it's, it was kind of a minefield right now.
So I'm, I can find it and get it to you, you know? I mean, we all, we all.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
We all had it, we wrote it on it, so.
Very much, but I don't, yeah.
Okay. Um, is there any, do you all agree with what Mr. Bombs is suggesting? You wanna roll that excess into the budget for next year? And then, and then it'll increase the amount of spending, right?
What's the plan for the spending?
Yeah, what's, what's the plan if we, if we use that money?
Why should we do that?
No, I'm not saying increase the spending with it. I'm saying is why, why can't we just reduce the taxes then?
The taxes aren't going up.
Taxes don't go up.
The taxes are flat.
You wanna lower the taxes?
Well, if you have all this, if you have this fund balance back then, why not then?
I'd like to have Tim weigh in here.
Well, well, sure. Two, two comments. One of the things I was just sort of pondering as we were looking at the slides here is that, that one of the things you have to take into account too is that the nature of local governments is that you receive your property taxes at the beginning of the year. And at that point, all of that revenue is recognized. So while you may be ahead right now, that's gonna fade towards the end of the year because you have all of your revenue now, you're gonna continue to have your expenses. So I, I would caution against necessarily thinking that you're gonna have three hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year because you do now. It would make sense that it would tend to fade. So I would, I would put that out there. The other thing, I, we've been involved in several budget meetings this month and in the upcoming months. And one of the things we've been cautioning people to is that Controller DeNapoli had put out a statement in July that he did hold the tax cap at two percent despite the fact that they recognized that the inflation factor is almost seven percent. So what we have cautioned folks in terms of decreasing property taxes is that your costs are going up. And even if you hold everything flat, you're in essence going backwards. So we do caution, you know, from a long-term perspective, reducing those amounts, you're, you're eating into your fund balance and you still have inflated appropriations or expenditures. So it's obviously a decision each board has to make themselves and, and what's, what's good short-term, long-term. But with inflation at, you know, almost seven percent and you're, you're burdened by a tax cap, so you'd have to override the cap to go, if you're gonna even match that, we suggest that you should at least hold flat or even consider some increases.
But I pulled up that resolution and it shows that there was no unexpendited fund balance for the highway last year. Says that there was, decreased four lines by seventy-two thousand eight hundred and increased six lines by seventy-two thousand eight hundred. And one of them was snow contractual thirty-two thousand. And I don't remember ever spending a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. I don't have that on my, on my paperwork. I had a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars that we spent in contractual under snow last year. So I'll have to, I'll have to look at some of those lines or go back and look at the end-of-the-year figures because something's not, something's not jiving. Because when I look at this, when I look at open book, it showed that I had a hundred and, I think it was like a hundred and twenty-nine, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in unexpendited funds in that. But there's no resolution in here if that was the case of where that money was, was transferred to.
We did transfer, but we'll look at that.
All right, because that, that, that means the minutes would have to be corrected.
That was it. There's something wrong there.
There's, there's something. There's another resolution I haven't taken.
Yeah, that's not it.
I mean, we did, how, how many others did we?
It wasn't, that wasn't.
No, that was something else.
Yeah, it was something else. I'll find all the people working against you guys. Also, there was no dedicated highway bank account in the past. So we're fixing that. Well, there, there should be, just.
I need to keep it on paper.
Record-keeping.
There's only a bank account.
That's a lot easier if you break it up a little bit.
Just one more area you gotta play with to make money and, on all money. Makes things more confusing.
So what do you all think? I'm looking for guidance from the board. Are you, um, you have the draft from the highway superintendent? Do you all want those changes implemented?
Well, if we're talking about doing that right now, I do have questions.
Also, are there any changes in the general fund, um, preliminary budget that you want made?
I, I have no further comments on the budget as it exists. Um, you know, we can, we can talk about what Councilman Bombs is talking about, but I, I have no other comments to make with respect to this budget. There, there might be some changes that we're talking about when it comes to the highway department because this is a new document that we haven't received. So maybe we can make some adjustments with respect to that, but otherwise I don't have any more comments.
Um, can we workshop this now and, um?
And include it? Yeah, yeah, if you'd like to do that, I'd be.
I would.
Okay.
Mike, what, what are we doing?
My, my suggestion, if I may, would be to put through the budget that I did, which was less than two percent, and offset it with some of the appropriated fund balances there. And then let me be frugal with it so that I can sit there and, you know, work with the board on our expenses for twenty twenty-four.
Okay, the other thing I would ask, since you brought frugality, is.
Sorry. Now, you can just talk into the microphone.
The other thing I would ask is, um, since you brought up frugality, is if you could also look at that for the highway garage line? Because there's a lot of money on that line that is more than just rent. Um, we're paying electric and oil on two buildings. Any supplies that you need for the buildings are going on that line? So there have been supplies that have been charged to, um, to buildings line, the sixteen-twenty line, that aren't to go on the sixteen-twenty line.
Not that I've signed.
So, um, they've been submitted and, and the expectation has been that we would pay them, so.
We've sent out for them, we haven't signed anything, it's been, been put down.
Right, but those are the things that go on, on the garage line. If there are things that are for the garage, that's where they go.
Going on garage.
Right. So, um, if there's anything that you can do to help, you know, reduce the amount of outgoing on that line, um, that would be great because then we can actually increase the highway superintendent's contractual line. You know?
I'll have that checked tomorrow.
Um, yeah, I mean, I had supplied some information about insulation that you can, you can add to the inside or garage doors and things. So anything that we can do to reduce the amount of outlay because we all know oil is expensive. So.
Concerned where oils can go, this whole thing that you.
Yeah. So, I mean, if we can cooperate on that, that would be a step in the right direction. Um, the town boards want.
Hey, tell you what, just send a memo up.
Okay.
And I post it on the board and I, I discuss it with, you know, those mechanic, Michelle, and Foreman and the deputy. All go in the same place.
Okay. Um, does the town board want to adopt the budgets as submitted by the highway superintendent?
I want, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, on, I can't get my glasses on. On five-ten, uh, fifty-one-ten-four, you want it to a hundred and fifty grand. You've never come to that high ever before. And you talk about covert pipes, ordering covert pipes and catch bases. I see that we have probably between the first area and the back area, we probably have, if you put it end-to-end, half-mile worth of covert pipes already there. You've already got a half, half, half a mile worth. And of all the different sizes, I don't know why we would need more. And I know we have some catch bases. I would like, before this is approved, I would like a basic list of what you have and how much you have of it. Because, you know, I see a lot of this culprit pipe up there literally growing in the weeds that's not been paid for by the town and not being used. I'd like to see it being used. The other thing is, Mike, what, what, what are the reasons we have to keep the highway heated? What, the other.
You mean the Dog Hill Garage?
The Dog Hill Garage.
You wanna have a bathroom for a transfer station, guys?
Could a heating coil be put on the pipe that comes out of the cement through, out to the outside to the, to?
Were you in on the meeting with the union? I wasn't there, the supervisor was. She can speak to the meeting with the union.
There's a way to keep that line from freezing with heating coils. It's very easy. The other thing is, so what else? Because then you have a bathroom in there. You know, you have a nice trailer, actually, that's safe and doesn't have mold in it. They should be using that anyway. So what?
Go on a trail, that's transfer station.
Wait, wait, but if, if, hold on, hold on. Peter, I just, I wanna make sure that, you know, I mean, if you get into the specifics of each one of these things, it's gonna be very difficult for us to follow. So, I mean, if you're suggesting that we, that these numbers change, are you asking?
We're asking, we're, Melinda's asking to accept this and I think, I think there's ways to cut these, like that one down. Not saying all.
So that's, that's, you're talking about, uh.
Repairs contractual.
Repairs and.
Repairs contractual. So Mike is proposing a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
I, can I jump in here? I'm sorry.
No, I actually meant it to a hundred and thirty-five.
It says a hundred and fifty on the one I got.
Me too.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, here's the thing, I did, um, so thank you to the highway superintendent for providing us historical data from twenty sixteen. I took deliberately, as we were sitting here, of adding up these numbers over seven years, so twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two actual. And the average amount of money that we're spending is eighty-six thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and fourteen cents. That's an average over seven years. The ask is for a hundred and fifty.
Which is just corrected to a hundred and thirty-five.
A hundred and thirty-five.
But that's part of it. I'm still, I'm still wondering, like, I go through the vouchers and I check for the repairs and the work that's being done out of house. I've literally seen, which there might be a reason for it, I don't know why, but I've seen oil changes being done out of, out of the building. I also saw one that was for almost eight or nine hundred dollars for a, for a loose solenoid line that literally cost five dollars, seven dollars, maybe seventeen to repair.
I'll, I'll, I'll put it into you for purchasing. You can go out and get the, get the prices.
I, I'm just asking why we can't do this work in-house? Like, why can't someone fix a solenoid line?
It's cheaper for us to take a smaller truck down to the dealership and have them do an oil change than it is for us to buy the oil and the filter and do it in-house.
You, you did buy fifty-five gallon drums of oil, have you not? Yes, so you have.
But not, not for the gas and it's.
You, you, well, then, then honestly, why wouldn't you? Because that would save us money.
Peter, this is.
Why would I have that much oil sitting around for a small truck?
Peter, this is gonna, this is gonna take us in, in a direction that we don't want.
Yep.
Well, I'm just, I mean, want the board to understand that.
I think we get it. But if we, if we, if he's proposing a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from an actual expenditure in twenty twenty-two of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and we know that there are things that are gonna go up, is that a reasonable ask?
I would, I would say no. I think we need to go through the vouchers and I can show you where, that we should have saved money.
But if, if we're looking at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars already expended, so that's seven thousand dollars difference. Do you understand what I'm saying? That, am I not making sense here?
Even if you, if you just simply take that one twenty-eight and you add like five percent inflation or something like that, then you wind up with very, something very close to one thirty-five. I mean, I know what you're talking about in terms of how everything is being costed out this way and that way. But, you know, from a macro standpoint, I think we have a lot to do here and it would be.
Well, I don't have it, I don't really have a say in it at this point in time.
No, you have a say, but I, what I'm saying is that.
Well, I'm just trying to explain.
No, I think we get it. I think we get it. I think we get it. But the problem that we're running into is that there's an expenditure, if this is correct, which I know it is, of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And so if.
Why did it all of a sudden jump up in the last two years since we've been here?
Well, weren't you doing something like drainage those other years? And that.
In twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, that was, that was COVID.
Yeah, but that's big drainage projects, all your gravel, all your pipe, all your cash basins, all your liquid rental all comes out of fourteen Hs.
Right.
Then when we end the year, we have that money left over in repair line and that goes back in and then you guys get to replenish that townwide stormwater. So it's really not.
Unless we go out to bid and then it costs us more.
I'd like to make a motion, I'm sure, can I make a motion? That we accept the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that, uh, Mike Schulte says the superintendent has proposed, has offered as a amendment to the current what he originally asked.
Yep, you can make that motion, is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
And so, yes. Now go to fifty-one thirty machinery. You know what, you can't be, make me quiet, I'm talking and stuff.
Wait, wait, wait.
Peter, there's a motion and a second on the table, you have to focus on this one line.
It's just one thing we're looking at now, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's all we're dealing with right now.
All right, I still think it's high.
A hundred and thirty-five thousand is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the average of eighty-six, so I mean, I don't, you know.
Okay, you gotta take into consideration inflation that we've had in the last fifteen months.
Sure.
Garble, about three hundred percent. We actually were able to replace six sections of car, hit the guardrail on Voice Road. And today, I had the crew up there yesterday and today, we rebuilt the shoulder up. We pulled the stakes out and pulled them straight, they didn't get bent, and we were able to reuse all that guardrail, build a bank block out.
How much guardrail we have left?
We got some up there, but we're not, not everything we need to replace. So when we go to do it, um, you know, the county will work with us and.
Can, can, can we, can we?
What's all of the, what's all of the, um, guide rail that's down in the back, in the brush, in buried in the brush? Is that old, is that usable? What is that?
Can we vote on this question?
No, I'm asking a question.
It's a budget meeting. If you want to go into inventory, stuff for that inventory.
Is, is it usable? Can you tell me that?
Oh, when I look at it.
Do you, do you, have you seen it?
I absolutely have.
So, would you, are you saying we need to buy more?
There's, there's a motion and a second on the table.
You need to stop retaliating against the highway department, Peter.
I love the highway department.
No, you don't, you retaliate for two years now, so.
Now it's not, it's not. This isn't a stop.
All right, this is not the forum for this, folks.
This isn't about, I'm asking honest to God questions.
Stop it, like Bob Newhart in that show, just stop.
No.
Stop the retaliation.
It's not retaliation.
All right, this is exactly.
Folks, that's, that's not what, that's not what this is, it's, so.
There's one.
I just request that the board increases the, the repair line and the mechanic's line for truck repairs, or we're going to be in trouble.
So.
With that said, thank you very much.
Mike, Mike, Mike.
Mike's about to vote.
Mike, we're about to vote on a resolution and we have another resolution that's coming. Could you just please wait a minute?
That has to do with.
Well, I'm not going to be attacking retaliation against fire. All right, but we're going to.
This isn't attacked, I'm asking honest to God questions.
Can we vote?
No, you're not.
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Let's vote.
You're talking about buying things that I see we have. I'm doing my job.
Can we vote?
All in favor.
I retire with Mr. Murphy, highway department, Peter, maybe I'll run a figure or two.
Hi.
Hi.
I abstain.
I'm for it.
All right, motion passes.
Okay, now what's the next issue that you wanted to bring up, Peter?
The machinery contr- contractual.
Okay.
Oh, wait, first, permanent improvements on DA five fifty-one twelve to increase that again. Um, I actually read an article about, uh, the city of Kingston in the Freeman, about his highway superintendent, how he, he literally says, and it's a quote unquote, that doing paving is the, is, is ridiculous to do without fixing the drainage first. Because drainage is what's destroying most of our roads.
So are you, are you, um?
I would like to see money, most, I would like to see the paving kind of slow down. Like we've said, I've never had anyone come to this town board crying or screaming about a pothole, but there are drainage issues that's not only flooding people's houses, it's also destroying our roads.
And we're having to put everything out to bid because, because, um, fill in the blank there. Does the town board want to stick with the three hundred that we've always allocated? Or do you want to go to three fifty, which is what's being asked?
If you want to drop it to three hundred, I'm fine.
What do you, what do you all want to do?
Well, there's going to be.
Why did you raise it to three fifty, Mike?
Because of the increased cost to asphalt?
It's gone up about fourteen dollars.
So.
Best estimate, I mean, we, we need guidance here, I mean.
Yeah.
Three, three fifty.
Case in point, Marlboro did exactly that, they stopped paving roads years ago before, uh, Gail Apler stood in and the roads were in such dis- disrepair when he stepped in, they had to go out and bond to get the roads all back up so that they were safe. If you drive around the roads, look at them, look at what we call alligatoring. Alligatoring is when there's cracks. Or like the back of an alligator and.
Mike, what, what is your best estimate? What do you project to be the increase in cost for asphalt going forward in 2024? Best estimate?
If, if things break loose in the Middle East, all, all bets are off because asphalt is the direct.
Best estimate, best estimate.
Like fourteen dollars a.
We get two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars reimbursed from the state.
Yeah.
So.
I would like to leave it pretty much at that. Just on the fact that we can, then the budget allows more money for them to help us with some drainage issues.
I mean, is there, is there a scenario that would allow for the highway department to help the town resolve some of the longstanding drainage issues that we're encountering?
We've been doing one every year. We've been nonstop, that's all we do, and it was drainage. All summer long, we devoted, since I've become superintendent in 2018, we've devoted the summer construction season to drainage. This is the first year that we didn't do a big drainage project and it was because the deputy supervisor blasted us at an October meeting and said he didn't want us doing drainage projects anymore and called the highway guys a bunch of idiots. So we didn't do a big drainage project.
I don't recall that taking place at any point.
Um, I, I, I think we need to.
So, I mean, I've been doing drainage projects every year.
Yeah, can we stick to the budget?
I started with Cheryl Orchard, Wall Street, Park Drive, Chestnut. Uh, we finished up Hickory last year. We saved those, we saved the town over a million dollars on those projects.
Well, we need to talk about Chestnut.
Mike, Mike, I, I, I think I'm going back to the issue again.
Yeah.
Best estimate, you're asking for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's three hundred dollars that are proposed. Best estimate, what do you think the increase is going to look like in 2024? Best estimate?
I haven't gotten anything from them. Alls I know is that it fluctuates. Again, asphalt is the byproduct of refining crude.
Yes, yeah.
And they were bringing it up from Venezuela, um, but.
Do you have any idea how much it increased between 2022 and 2023?
Fourteen dollars.
It was over ten percent, about eleven percent.
Eleven percent? So we could project reasonably an eleven percent increase?
As I said, if you want to keep it at three hundred, we get two hundred and sixty-five thousand, we don't want to lose that funding.
What do you guys want to do?
We have to spend that money or we get back from DOT.
I understand that, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to a figure here so that we can move on.
Can I make a suggestion here?
We're going to pave what we can pave, not about the budget.
We've got three fifty over here, we've got three hundred over there, why don't we just meet at three twenty-five?
He just said ten percent increase, so we're looking at about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Three thirty.
That means the same amount of paving that we're doing now when we really need to be working on drainage. You've been to our meetings, what, they're ninety percent about drainage issues.
Are you suggesting that we hold it at three hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, well, there's a motion.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
To hold it at three hundred?
Yeah, based, Mike said yes, three hundred thousand. Peter was recommending three hundred thousand.
Okay, let's do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So Carrie.
Next issue, Peter.
Just remember, we're going to pave what we can pave and what we don't pave goes back into your hands at the end of the year.
Right.
And you do the, you know, leave it be done.
Machinery contractual.
Contractual?
Yeah, machinery contractual. Can you explain that to me, Mike?
The machinery contractual line.
I'm sorry.
Machinery contractual.
Machinery contractual, you're proposing a hundred and fifty thousand.
That's the repair on all trucks?
Yeah.
Are, are we getting new trucks this year in 2024?
Hopefully. They're supposed to go on the assembly line on December, but that's never given. And also just got their new Western Star, they waited, uh, two and a half years.
Yeah, we approved those purchases last year.
We got two in the pipeline, we, we, uh.
Yeah, but it means that we won't have expenditures on.
On repairs, right.
Okay, this is.
Case in point, my, my truck, no heat in it. So I have the mechanic, he's working feverishly to get truck ten done, he's been doing it all in-house, doing a wonderful job. Truck ten is one of our mountain trucks, it's a four-wheel drive, six by four, with a wing that does all the mountain runs down here. Does Canary Hill, does Steel Pick, does Eagle's Nest, um, does the heights. And we've had to go from the front bumper to the back bumper on that truck. We painted the entire frame, we had to replace the part that Peter was talking about, uh, that we have to get from the dealership, that everything we buy anymore is a thousand dollars. Uh, but he's done a great job. But then my truck today, I had the problem with the heat and I took it over to Sawyer Motor to check it out because they're busy in the shop preparing for winter.
Mike.
He came back with a price to replace my truck for eighty-four hundred dollars because it's the transmission pans leaking, the oil pans leaking.
So I'm, I'm really, really trying hard here to get to numbers so that we can finish this budget. You know, I really want us, I mean, there's a proposal, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the budgeted amount for 2024 is seventy-five thousand. And you're proposing that we go back to an original, the 2023 budget of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I would try to keep it the same because the, again, parts have gone crazy. I just gave you an example, the part that we have to buy for the paper, little, little micro switch that turns the order off and on for the blacktop, not working. I went down to Hoffman, six hundred dollars, so it's, I mean, it's crazy.
Can I ask another question? Is it likely, is it likely that we'll get the new trucks this year in 2024?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to propose, I'd like to, this is what I'd like to propose, that we move this seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand. Okay, because what I'm thinking this hundred and fifty thousand would be dealing with is the maintenance on these trucks. And if we have new trucks, the maintenance is likely to go down, at least for the, for the next year.
Hopefully.
Well, God.
Well, they shouldn't be guaranteed.
Uh, it would be on the warranty, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so my proposal is that we move this to a hundred thousand dollars and that would be my motion. Mike, would that be acceptable? A hundred thousand?
That's kind of low, that's kind of low, we're, we're probably a hundred thousand right now, actual, I mean, we're.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, a hundred, well, that was, a hundred and fifty was what you.
Yeah, what's, uh, the actual, I'm trying to look for, what Melinda gave me the actual was for September and I'm not certain that's, she's, she has it as, uh, seventy-eight thousand. And I can guarantee you, we're up over a hundred thousand right now.
That was all, that was including all of the receipts that I had in my hand for the end of September.
Right, we're, we're in October now, he's been working on truck ten.
I understand, I haven't, I didn't take into account October, I, you know.
Truck seventeen is in, getting a, a head right now down at the Eagle. Been in there for three weeks.
My motion still stands.
I'd like to go to a hundred and twenty-five instead of a hundred. I don't want to.
Can, so let's say a hundred and ten and.
Hold on.
Again, whatever doesn't get spent comes back to you.
I, I have a, I have a question. The contractual line, is this include every time these trucks go out and get work done?
Yes.
I know for a fact there's a lot of things on there that could be done in-house. For instance, I just brought the one up, oil changer, that's a simple one. Now.
You know for a fact that a lot of that work will be done in-house.
You can't, you're, if our mechanic can't change oil, then we got a problem.
Peter, what don't you understand, when I send a truck out for ten forty oil, gas engine, it's cheaper to send it down to Beggno than it is for him, paying him thirty-one dollar an hour to do an oil change.
So can we?
In our shop to buy the cases of oil and the filter.
It's cheap. If we don't, if we go back down to a hundred, I'll be okay.
Peter is suggesting that we go to a hundred.
What are you all comfortable with?
Mike?
Well, I, I think with the, you know, Mike's the professional. I mean, he knows better. And I would think if he's, I suggest, uh, what is it, a hundred and thirty you suggested?
No, he's saying a hundred and ten.
A hundred and ten?
No, I said a hundred and twenty-five.
You said a hundred and twenty-five.
Actually.
You have here a one twenty-five.
No, the problem is that you never know, I mean, these older trucks.
Well, here's, here's the thing.
We can blow them over this, this winter on one of the trucks.
I understand.
Here's the thing, here's the thing, it's also, if you go a hundred and twenty-five, you don't spend it at a hundred and twenty-five, it comes back to us.
Correct. It's governmental budgeting, you got to zero everything out at the end of the year.
I propose one twenty-five.
I agree.
There is no way that's correct, there isn't.
Well, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
For a hundred and twenty-five?
Yes.
For machinery?
I have something I want to say before we vote.
Well, we're going to have discussion.
Go ahead.
Mike, you say, Bob, you say that Mike is the expert on this. The thing is, is out of anybody in this room right here, as far as mechanics and work and trucks and repairs and cars, it's me.
The only problem is, he was elected as this, as this superintendent of highway.
This is not getting us anywhere.
Look, look, what I'm trying to say is, this isn't personal, this is stuff I know.
You can race car, Peter, you own trucks.
Yeah, yes, I have, I was in charge of race haulers and the whole works.
Yeah, I know, but you have a hauler, you haul around.
I'm sorry you don't.
Wait, hold on.
I'm sorry you don't. I'm trying to save the town, right?
I know, I know.
I've done, I've built my own diesel motors in my business.
I know, that's your intention.
I, I.
So there's a, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
What are we, what number are we on?
One twenty-five.
That's crazy.
Yana said one twenty-five.
Okay.
Do you need to make a?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain, no. Do I?
So Carrie. Okay, um. So miscellaneous, uh, the request is for sixty-six thousand up from thirty-eight five.
That's a contractual.
That's contractual, that's.
No, that's a, that's, that's miscellaneous.
Fifty-one thirty.
That's payroll, that's payroll.
That's, yes. So are we going to accept that sixty-six thousand dollar number?
Yeah, Mike, it's not what you brought, brought to the, you brought that to the town board.
Right.
That there was a, that, that number was incorrect.
Yes, that's contracted.
I, and if I could, if you could send me a copy of the signed contracts, I have.
Sixty-five six.
Oh, yeah, we just got those in the mail.
Because I was over the three percent increase when I did the original budget and I found out there was a dollar increase per year.
Yeah.
And I didn't know that, so I had to revise my numbers.
Okay, um, yeah, we just got those from the union in the last week. Okay. Miscellaneous contractual, are we going to ten?
Wait, so we're going sixty-six on the, on the first one?
Yes, so let's move along. Point four contractual, the ask is ten thousand. The seven-year average is fifty-five eighty-four. Just for reference, not suggesting.
Can I just get an understanding what the, what, what is this, for this meeting?
Why so much?
That's a lot of camera and GPS, it's in all trucks.
Okay.
And does, does Nymer give us a, a discount? Why?
Seven twenty, ten percent.
I think they would give us a discount.
They didn't have a mechanism to do that, I can go back at it and ask them, yeah. Okay, so that, that snow PS line, you revised it up because that three twenty-two nine eighteen was the number that I received from you originally?
Yeah, I round, I usually round them off to near three point three.
Okay, all right, so that's not so much different.
Just easier for budgeting.
Snow contractual. So what's currently proposed is a hundred and seventeen thousand, the ask is for a hundred and eighty thousand.
Oh, okay.
We didn't really have any snow last year, so.
I'm just concerned, last year we used over a thousand tons, twelve hundred tons, just in February, though, I saw. And the salt has gone up, because the government signed a law saying that we had to use salt for this country, not motors, so population couldn't bid on salt contract anymore. That combined with the new regulation that she wrote, that says anything that's trucked under fifty miles, they have to pay prevailing wage, so it's going to put the cost up even more, because we get it from Fargo, it's on the Albany, which is under fifty miles, so we have to pay prevailing wage instead of the trucking rates that we pay now. So that's, that's, again, it's going to fluctuate. I put it a little bit high, because I don't know the impact of the trucking and this new cost, but I could definitely.
Yeah, you're talking about.
Keep it at about the same budget as last year, and again, if we don't spend that money, it comes back to you all.
You're talking about just over, just, just over ten percent increase?
Yeah, plus the trucking that we don't even know what it's going to be yet, we talked about it at the superintendent's meeting.
It's ten percent.
It's going to happen, it's a fifty mile, anything, under fifty miles has to be prevailing rate for anything trucking, which is going to be, it's going to raise the cost exponentially, powered by fifty, seventy percent.
Well, I know.
And we don't have a ten wheeler, so we can't go up and get it ourselves, although.
Yeah, what do you all think?
I. You know, my feeling is that if you do the hundred and eighty thousand and it's not being spent, the whole thing, it does come back to us. Second, you know, so maybe just be safe and go that way, knowing the fact that whatever was budgeted is going to come back as a fund balance at the end of the year.
Okay.
I'd rather that I keep, I'd rather that I fall short.
So what do y'all think? Is that, that's a motion?
I agree.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so adopting all of those changes brings us to one million eight hundred and forty-six thousand and seventy-five dollars, that includes employee benefits. Right now, we have one point five in, in real property taxes. Do you all want to keep that level and add money from the fund balance to bridge that gap?
I would like, I would like that, yes.
We're going to be getting, I'm going to, before I leave tonight, I'm going to grab that check, I'm going to run it up, that's going to be a hundred and sixty-nine, we'll pay them tomorrow again, I'm going to try to get that in, but we won't get that back until the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. But that's going to be close to, you know, what we get back from our CHIPS funding, and whatever we don't get back, we'll, we'll roll over and use for next years, so, because this year I got a late start. I usually like to start paving in May and June, and this year I didn't get to start paving until a couple of weeks ago, so.
I would like to ask, I would like to ask if you would prepare your two eighty-four agreement and have it ready for the town board in January, please.
I don't know what the roads are going to look like until the frost.
No, I mean.
I mean, I'll do it.
Here, here's the thing.
John asked me to do it one time too, and we had a change of.
Well, but the thing is, it's, it's usual for towns, town highway supers to do an amended two eighty-four. That's expected, so you put in what you think, and then if you may need to make an amendment, we make an amendment.
It's just been practiced throughout the county that everybody submits it at, you know, March, April, but I can do it in January.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think it'll alleviate some bumpiness if we can have it earlier. And, I mean, if you have to amend it, you amend it, that's, that's not a big deal.
So are we looking to pull this out of the, any kind of difference out of the general fund?
Yeah, so, um. I'd like to propose that we at least go back up to keep the tax levy flat.
Yeah.
Which would be one million five hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars. We have two options, we can pull the full amount of difference from the fund balance, or we can raise property taxes a bit.
I, I would, I would do a one percent increase, it would look like a hero, but in this financial situation that we're in. I mean, yes, that's the, the.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, you already made a comment.
I would love for Tim to bring it on.
Yeah, you made some comments about.
I think of the inflationary climate that we're in right now.
We should have followed that a decade ago.
What's, what was the, what was the ultimate ending number of the two thousand twenty-four appropriations?
For highway?
One eight four, yeah, one eight four six, and last year it was.
One eight five three five seven nine.
So it's relatively flat, a little bit down actually. And what do we have in fund balance for, are you saying you don't maintain any fund balance in highway, or do you have?
No, there is, there is fund balance in highway.
Yeah, I was confused by the general fund thing, so, do we know how much is in the?
Could be fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars increase. If you want one percent, right?
In the property taxes?
In the property tax, but that's not the question, no.
We're just looking at what the difference is.
I mean, there's.
You want to keep it really flat, how big, do you have rate of inflation that we see?
We should have worried about that, I don't want to make a statement here, we've kept, we've kept that general fund way higher than the controller's office ever told us to. For instance, when we were close to nine million dollars in there, with a ten percent interest rate increase on that money, we lost, we lost buying power on that money, because we had too much money in there. That could have bought three plow trucks, because we didn't have the money invested properly. So we've already had way more than we should have had in there. We should look into NIPAS, we need to look at the other investment, things that this town has never looked into. We had three different, we had different money, put money markets at the rate of one point three and a one point six. Both times, looking at that as to be proud of, when inflation went up more, both those, all those years, than the, than the interest rate that we're getting on those money markets. Granted, it was still better than before, when we're basically making nothing on interest rate for those millions of dollars. And now we are, so I understand your comment of the raise, it's raise the taxes, but we already have enough in that general fund to start spending it, which we should have spent a lot of this money earlier, like you stated before, Mike.
I think that's it.
Why spend it when you put it in for a highway garage capital fund? Then you don't have to bond as much.
I just want the people to understand that our last year.
Three hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Is that, is that?
Three hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's the difference.
That's the difference, and that difference can come from the fund balance.
That's fine, if that's what you all want to do.
Well, well, we need, we need some guidance here from.
What, what's the three hundred and twenty-six thousand?
That's the increase.
That's the, that would be the amount of money that we'd pull from the unassigned fund balance to bridge the gap for the increased highway budget.
So before, the original number was one seven four seven five six five.
Right.
Okay.
And, and you had estimated revenues of two hundred and fifty thousand, and.
Yes, but highway superintendent is suggesting that we don't, we don't include those.
Why wouldn't you include those?
Why wouldn't we include the estimated revenue, revenues? You said not to include those, the two hundred and fifty thousand?
In COVID, they took twenty percent away, if something goes south.
Right.
You know, God forbid, you know, the war spreads in the Middle East, or something else happens catastrophic, that money's not a guarantee.
Okay.
It's not a guarantee from the.
Not a bird in the hand.
I mean, yeah, I guess my, my two cents.
We usually split fifty percent in there, and then when we got the extra, then we would put it in appropriated fund balance for the following year to keep the tax rate down.
Yeah, I think, I think before I would prompt raising taxes, I, I would not take away the estimated revenues that have been consistent from year to year.
Absolutely.
Um, so, yeah, if I, if I take that in, what I'm seeing is there's about a ten thousand dollar difference.
Right, okay.
Okay, so, so what I would say is, I would true it up to what the prior year was, which is just about that, that ten thousand dollar difference, and, and I don't think you'd need to use any fund balance at all, that is, you'd just be flat year over year.
Good point, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's, that's what we'll do. Okay. All right, as, as for the rest of it, you all are okay with where things are at with the general fund balance? Yeah. The, the revenue projections, you're not, I mean, you heard feedback tonight, I, I mean.
I don't, I, as I said from the start, I don't have any additional comments to make.
Um, Mr. Barnes, you have any concerns over revenue projections?
I'm so concerned about that interest in earnings, where, you know, we've had twenty-five thousand, now we're a hundred and forty thousand. I know that, I know what you said, Melinda.
I talked to the banker.
Yeah. I mean, that's a, that's a huge difference, it's a big.
I mean, do you want to, does the town board want to decrease that amount?
No.
I just want to decrease it.
One percent of five million dollars, I believe is, quickly, fifty grand?
Yes.
So when interest rates goes up from one percent, which is, it was one percent for the first six months of this year.
That's true.
And it went up to one point six five in July, and in, in August, it went up to two point two five.
Yeah.
So the amount of money you're literally seeing in right now is actually lower than it's going to be next year, because for half the year, it was at one percent.
Yeah.
And we've already been told by everybody and the bank that it's going to stay that.
And the county council.
So that explains interest rate and the amounts.
Yeah.
It's pretty simple matter.
As far as department expenses and things, everybody's okay with what's in there? I mean, I'm, you know, I do the best I can, right?
I think those are the best, the best estimates that you presented.
That's what it is, it's an estimate.
I don't think, I mean, I mean, you shave, you've cut, I mean, you've done what I think a non-accounting mind would have probably done, so.
Next to a ten.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
All right, all right, so if, I will make these changes that we discussed and send you all a revision. Okay.
All right, then we can, then we can go back to that thought.
Well, I, I would imagine that revision will be more or less the final revision, I mean, if you all are comfortable with, I mean, anything you're not comfortable with, let's try to hash that out now.
I think it's fantastic, I've worked on the last four budgets with supervisors, and this is by far the best I've seen.
I mean, it's, you know, reality is, it isn't, um.
Well, you can't predict the future with any.
Nothing, right, nothing is perfect, so.
Well, you can't predict the future in any.
No, you can't.
No, a meteor could hit us tomorrow, we won't have to worry about anything.
Right. Okay, so barring the meteor, my figures are good. So, any other concerns, Mr. Barnes?
Then let's pass.
I'm still, I'm looking, I'm still looking at this.
Melinda, what would you, would you like us still to vote on it tonight?
Yeah.
Is that what you want, because we have a deadline.
Vote on the budget with changes.
With the changes?
With the changes, yeah, I'm good with that.
Or should we have all the?
Or do you want just to meet again?
I, I think I would like to issue the revision of what we agreed on.
Okay.
And then look at it again. And then come back at it on November fourteenth. I mean, we do have to have this passed by.
At the end of November.
Before the twentieth.
Before the twentieth of November.
Yes.
I think we can do it, I think we're very close.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
So you're going to just send us the revised.
Yeah, I'll make all these revisions. Thank you. And I'll get them off to by the end of the week. Thanks for all your hard work. Thank you.